I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrari, Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Murbaugh, Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Here.
Mr. Pacetto?
Here.
Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, Tamara, Jen.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. At this time, I'd like the members of the board to look over the minutes for the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. If there's no additions or corrections, any motion for approval?
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes, still here. Tonight, under recognitions, which is actually one of my favorite parts of the meeting every month. I'll be very honest with you, where we can kind of strut our stuff with our students and staff. But tonight, after looking at just all the different components, I was just amazed where our math students, because it's just, well, we have Alex Anderson and Will McLennan McLoughlin, excuse me.
McLoughlin.
Competed in the ICTM State Math Team Competition, Saturday, April sixth, at Illinois State University. Okay. Now, they were, they were two out of three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight students who attended. All those students competed. There was a total of sixty-five thousand and twenty-six problems. Overall, Alex and Will ended up twenty-fourth in the state with their oral presentation, where they had to give ten minutes, they were given ten minutes to prepare their answers to five questions, and then they had seven minutes to explain their answers and work to different teachers and professors across the state. Then they were given three more minutes to answer three more questions on the spot with no prep time. That's amazing. I mean, that is awesome. Their sponsor is Mrs. Caitlin Monahan, who's the math team sponsor. At this time, I would like Alex to come up, meet the board, and get a certificate of recognition.
I can't even challenge my checkbook.
Congratulations. Great job.
I want you and Will on my trivia night team.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Will McLoughlin.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Nice job, I'd like congratulations.
Congratulations.
And the math team sponsor, Mrs. Caitlin Monahan.
Great work.
Thank you.
No better than worrying about weather, huh?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Also this evening, we're going to recognize four staff members for their leadership of development in delivering Cabs Day. The feedback from the students was overwhelming and positive. These four individuals did a tremendous job. When I call your name, please come up, meet the board, and get a certificate of recognition. Mrs. Carol Navarro.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you. It's a great job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Carol, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you guys for letting us do it. Congratulations.
Mr. Jason Miller.
Great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Jason, congratulations.
Mrs. Nicole Kowalski.
She love busy?
Yep. Mrs. Andrea Eckelkraut.
Great work.
Nicole. I got it. Oh, I know. I forgot that's seventeen. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you. Yep.
Get out of your way.
I'm gonna go this way. Okay. I don't know how, I can get you there.
You are the winner.
How'd your fundraiser go?
Um, it was fine. We haven't found out our total yet, so, yeah. Paula was checking into that. I was at Shepherd all day today, so.
What was the event?
We did a percentage of dinners went at Bash on that Burger and Sushi House in Ottawa a week ago Tuesday, and so, I mean, I'd love to have another Friday or Saturday.
For what program?
For, I sponsor a fine arts festival at our, at Ottawa. We've been doing it for fifty years. I've been doing it for twenty-six years.
I have a lot of pictures, probably two boxes, a tub and a box, of pictures donated to me from a local artist that we're supposed to sell to raise revenue for the building.
That's awesome.
I have no idea what to do with these pictures or how to.
Oh, how to market them?
Market them, or, you know, no idea.
Hello, Gary. Two minutes. Hi, Gary.
Looked like I didn't have any friends, so thanks for coming.
You're just so bright over there by yourself.
Tonight, for our Division Spotlight, our mathematics department, our AP Stats class, who is Mrs. Rachel Patrick, will be presenting with her students. Mrs. Patrick.
Wanna sco up here? I can.
Careful.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. I'm not gonna get near the cord.
Am I standing in front of the screen now?
You're fine.
You'll be fine.
Nope, you just roll.
Are you sure?
We'll, we'll adapt. You're, you're good.
Okay, first off, I'm Rachel Patrick, and these are my, two of my statistics students, Adam and Megan, who've given up an evening to come share their experiences with you guys. Okay, um, so the first thing I wanted to quickly explain is in my stats class, we do something that's pretty different. It's called the EFL, EFFL method, experience first, formalized later. So every day, they kind of come in, and there's some kind of activity to get them going, some kind of data collection, some kind of experiment, something, and then they like work through a set of questions that leads them to the objectives and the skills we're working on. And then about halfway through, we go over that, and then I give them the formal definitions, the formal terms, and everything. Studies have shown that it leads them to build on that experience and remember it better, so when they get to the AP test, it's easier to pull out of their head and they can remember the information so much better. Okay, so there, I'm gonna just talk about a couple of activities that we've done. One of the most memorable and funnest activities that we've done is bungee jumping with Barbie dolls. And in this, we would measure how far Barbies would bungee jump and how low they'd reach. And then upon that, throughout our unit, we calculated on how to predict how far these Barbies would bungee jump. And at the end of the unit, we redid our bunch, or activity, and actually, we sent them through a staircase. Yeah, so the first video here is just them measuring just in the classroom.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, you don't wanna give Barbie concussion.
Do you measure to the hair or the head?
It was a competition to get the closest without hurting Barbie. Yes. So, and then, this was the winner, to where these, in their final trial, in their calculations, she did not hit her head on the stair.
Oh, my.
Just missed it.
Yes.
Because yeah, if you crack your hea, if you crack Barbie's head open, you didn't win.
That's not fun. We even named our Barbies.
And then another thing we did, this was in the same unit act, she was our activity with the little matchbox cars, the pullback cars, and we had tried them from different lengths away and to see how far they would get going to a line without going over, and we did this to be able to experience different models of regression. So we had started the unit with Barbie in the linear regression, and then we had done exponential and quadratic as well to show. And this is one of the most difficult concepts of the course, I think that chapter was, but really, with it, between Barbie and this activity, I think I remember it very well, and I think we're ready for the test at least.
And then, we have finished our material for the year, so we're now into our review. And then I just have a quick little summary of some of our past scores. You can see here, we're the first number, so our average score was three point four seven last year, Illinois three point oh two, and Global two point eight eight. So over the last, I started this in two thousand and nineteen, this method, so every year, we've outscored Illinois in the Global. And even in two thousand and twenty-one, when we only had thirty minute, thirty-three minute classes, still outscore the state. And then this last side is our passing rate. So, we're usually in the high seventies versus globally is around sixty percent.
And if I'll, just to provide even more information for the board, this is on a five-point rating scale, and you need a three in order to have kind of a qualifying score.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The Barbie activity.
Yeah.
Were all the Barbies the same? Or were they different weights?
They were different.
They were different weights?
Yep.
Okay. That's the science in me.
Yep.
I'm just.
Yeah, because every group had a different Barbie, and they did their own calculation, so it wasn't the same for every Barbie.
Good.
Oh, good, good.
Excellent. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You look just like Wizard.
I'm getting better.
You look just like your dad.
Uh, there's no public comment this evening.
Who's dad, don't you, Scotty?
Uh, on the finance, I need to look over the bills and payroll from South Pretanchep High School. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
With Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the bills for the LP area Career Center?
So moved.
Check it.
Mr. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the payroll report?
So moved.
Check it.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the financial records as presented?
So moved. Check it.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence, we have a thank you letter from mock trial team for the Board of Education's support for the team inaugural season. Uh, we also have a congratulations letter from Mr. Jeff Bergfeld from Henry, Illinois, for the exceptional production of Les Miz, uh, and the Board of Education's support for the Fine Arts Program at LP High School. And we also have a thank you card from Mrs. Inger Cushing for the beautiful flowers from the district. Board committee reports, Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari.
Uh, the Building and Grounds Committee met last week, Monday, April ninth. We touched on the status of the LP Sports Complex. We're still waiting on the installation of at least one sliding window to each of the press boxes. They're waiting on that. Cool Masters are waiting a quote from one of their suppliers. There's talk about added protection around the bullpens to keep errant baseballs from reaching players and spectators during warmups. They're looking at some potential temporary measures while they're waiting to get the, the netting. Spring/summer projects, uh, bid opening is, was scheduled for the following day regarding the summertime renovations at Howard Fellow Stadium, and I'm sure that's something that we're gonna be discussing later tonight. There was a change order request regarding the renovations to the counseling offices, which was tabled pending a proposal for some door frames. The Kowalski projects, they're currently working on renderings for the spaces for the Health Occupations Classroom in the Dolan Building. Working on a, a sign for public display for the Playground Learning Center next to the Dolan Building. And we'll be getting more details on both of those issues next month. Building repairs, the exhaust system in the weld shop has been, has been repaired and completed. There's still some testing that needs to be done regarding the plaster repairs in the room three seventeen science lab that are waiting for some of this off and on rain to stop so they can do their testing and find out where the water is coming from that's causing the bubbling in the plaster. And there's further work being done regarding the school banner hangars in the parking lots, looking at either different hangars or going with a different company entirely. So that's, that's something that's still in the works. Looking at some preventative environmental testing, testing the indoor air quality on the school premises. This is being coordinated for sometime later this spring. This is just something that's gonna be done on a bi-yearly basis, and we'll get more on that later. There's a number of things being taken care of right now. Door operators and exhaust fans being placed in the nursing offices, Johnson-controlled and storing new, the new AV phone system. A pipe leak was recently repaired in the tunnels. Water heater pump in the main building, the seal was repaired. And they're still going through various punch list items at the sports complex. So basically, things are moving along. And I believe this week, they're started, they've started on the installation of the, the new electronic scoreboards in Select Jim. So, a lot of things going on.
Any questions?
No action items tonight on the, the agenda.
Thank you. Finance report, Mrs. Taliani.
So we also met on Tuesday, April ninth, and the month of financials, Dr. Robleski presented the revenue and expenditure reports, seventy-five percent through the year, and we are in line with the monthly business. Mrs. Does discussed cash and investments, and nothing was out of the ordinary, and we are in good financial standing. The Howard Fellow Stadium bid release was, the bid came in on April tenth, and it came in less than was expected, which is delightful news. The copy machine, there's a proposal the end of the month, proposals to do at the end of the month for the copy machine, requests to vendors. We'll hear more when there's more information there. Would like to give Dr. Robleski the authority for bids for the milk contract, bread, and pizza, as well as the Health Occupations renovations, correct, bid, and that is being funded by Mr. Kowalski. Other than that? There it is?
Any questions? Thank you. Administrator reports, superintendent's report, Dr. Robleski.
Uh, you have my report. It's in my packet. Two things, though, that I, I want to highlight that actually were, were not included on, on the packet. First one is a, it's a celebration that I want the, the board to, to be aware of. I think as, as professionals, we all go through various, we all, we all hit various benchmarks in our lives in terms of the better milestone events, and I want to make the board aware that on next Tuesday, April twenty-third, at five fifteen PM in the evening, Chris Gibson is going to walk into a classroom at the University of Saint Francis as Mr. Gibson. He is going to defend his dissertation, and will walk out of that classroom as Dr. Gibson. So I wanted to recognize Chris for the hard work that I know goes into attaining the, the doctorate, and I wanted the board to be aware, if we could wish him good luck on his, on his defense next week. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, to kind of pull actually from my, 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 my report is the, the cell phone policy work group update. We had a, kind of our, let's say kind of our final meeting today. We are at a point where we feel very comfortable with the framework for some updates to our cell phone policy. I wanted just to share, though, what the, the next steps are in the process, and so we've got a subcommittee of the group that is represented by all departments in the district. So we have got representation from, from every division, as well as various administrator departments as well. And Matt Baker is part of that, too, is our Director of Communications. We have a subcommittee that is going to draft the language and put it all together into a comprehensible form. On May first, would be the, it's a Wednesday, that's gonna be an early out. We're going to present that and share that with the faculty and the staff. There will be a policy committee meeting scheduled, where we will then present that to the members of the, the policy committee. We're going to be putting information out to our families, our students. We're also collecting feedback from the business community, so that way, we kind of have a, kind of a a full community-wide involvement in terms of soliciting input. I'm also intending to schedule an, an evening event, whereas be more in terms of giving all of our families an opportunity, if they would like to come in, ask questions, give feedback. So we want, we want to be very transparent in what we're doing, and we want to make sure that we give all of our stakeholders an opportunity, you know, to be able to provide, at least to be aware of, this is what we're, we're, we're looking to do, and, and more importantly, why of what, what we're intending, intending to do on this. Our timeline would be then to present this to the board at the May board meeting. That would be in time then for pending the board's approval. That would go into our student handbook. And then we would begin, over the summer months, a pretty intensive communications campaign. That not only is going to include significant communication to our community, but we're also looking at then creating some professional signage for the building. So that way there, it's very, very clear, and it's very, very evident what our expectations are. So that way there, there is, there's gonna be no misunderstandings as to what our expectations are in, in order to be able to provide more protections to the classroom in, in managing their, managing the focus, or I guess it's that management, redirecting the focus of our students. So I really want to commend the members of the committee for the work that they've done, and particularly the teachers on the committee. I, you know, sometimes when you pull together a lot of, a group of teachers, and you've got other administrators in, in the room, you know, it's, and I, and our, our staff is great, but sometimes human nature is human nature, right? In terms of, well, you know, how open am I going to be? Everybody's incredibly open, incredibly open, and not only in terms of the discrepancies and the problems that we have with the current application of our policy, and it was great information for administration to be able to have a perception, a perspective on theirs, but also was an opportunity for administration to be able to share some of our, the administration's challenges in, in being able to try to manage ninety different, ninety different teachers having variability in how they're applying the, the existing policy. And what we've really come, came away with is that it's, first of all, it's impossible for Ms. Lance and Mr. Miller to know frontward and backward what's happened in all ninety classrooms every period of the day. It just can't happen. And, but we've also appreciated the frustration from the teachers, and I even think looking at some of the parents, where, you know, depending on which teacher they have, there's different rules in how this, the cell phone policy is being allowed. So you may have one teacher that's very strict and is gonna write a student up, and you have another one that has a different approach in how they're managing it. So I, I appreciate what I think our community, our parents, see as mixed messages that we're, 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 we're sending home. So I really believe that what the team has crafted as a draft right now is going to make it very crystal clear what is going to be allowed and what's not going to be allowed. But I think we also still have a, a balance in terms of the, um, how cell phones or, or wireless devices, I guess I, for lack of a better term, can still be utilized and in what areas during the day it would be appropriate to, to use those. So we'll have more on that as we, as we progress, but I want to let the board know that we are on track to be able to have a recommendation to you next month.
Good.
And that's all I have unless there are questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal's report, acting principal, Mr. Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple things. You have my report in your packets, but I wanted to just touch on a couple of key items. I've got some more information, some statistical data information for you. First of all, I want to highlight the fact that, just kind of piggyback off of what Dr. Robleski was just talking about with the cell phone policy that will impact our student handbook. Our handbook committee has been meeting. In fact, we met last Thursday and Friday, led by Ms. Lance and Mr. Miller. So I appreciate the, the work and the leadership that they provide to that committee, but we had a total of eighteen members serving on that committee over the two days, and that's a widespread group of people, from parents, students, staff members, all involved in trying to craft any recommended changes that we would have for you for the handbook for next school year. Those recommended changes will come to you in, in the month of May and, and would probably align with that policy committee meeting in, in May. So you can look for those changes at that time. Digital testing, yesterday, today, we did SAT yesterday, PSAT today. It was an intense couple of days, but I'm incredibly proud of our students. couple of days, but I'm incredibly proud of our students. First of all, for their attendance rate for being here. The numbers I have, 97% of our juniors came in yesterday. And so that is just phenomenal that they came in and, and tested yesterday. It's an exceptional rate of attendance for those, those kiddos. We had 96% of our freshmen were here today in attendance, and 93% of our sophomores were here in attendance. And just so a point of reference, the state requires us to hit a 95% threshold to, to meet our accountability standard for, for assessment. And so we are almost there. We've just gotta get a few more sophomores. That makeup test will be here next Tuesday, and I will work with our proctors to administer that. I mentioned AP testing, so we go from SAT, PSAT to AP testing in two weeks. We're gonna be administering a little under 300 exams for, for AP tests. So we're looking forward, and as Mrs. Patrick alluded to, her students are reviewing, as are many other of our classes, to get ready for those, for those exams. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is the, the two big things that I'm also working on is master schedule. We will have that hopefully finalized within the next couple of weeks. We typically provide those, those schedules to our faculty before the end of the school year. And then also, our summer school plans are in the works, and we will have recommendations for staffing for summer school at the May, at the May board meeting. Any questions for me tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Director of Athletics and Activities is not here this evening. You have his, his report in your packets. Director of the Area Career Center, Mr. Minkin.
Good evening. Just wanted to highlight publicly our three Students of the Month coming up. Basically exemplify what the Career Center is, three different schools, three different kids, all taking our aviation program to the next level. In pursuit of career, one kid's already started his own business. So it's turned out to be very well. Mr. Golden, who is our, we had to hire mid-years, done a phenomenal job of bringing those kids to the final stages. They're getting ready to go sit. We don't force them to, but almost all of them are saying they're gonna go sit for their ground school exam. And Mr. Golden, being a, a CFI, can sign off on that. So we're getting ready for that one. So we look forward to reporting on the, the success of those students and taking that. Also wanted to highlight a special thanks, if you look further down in my report, Mr. Dave Argabright, who leads the local carpenters union, and as amongst other things he does for the union trades within the Illinois Valley region, has just been phenomenal in providing us with experiences. We have one coming up on the 29th. He's done this every year and sometimes multiple times a year. We got almost 100 kids going to experience the Pipe Fitters Apprenticeship Program and learn how to get into those apprenticeship programs and the skills and things they need for that. And not only do they pay for the transportation, buy the kids lunch and everything. So it's really quite a great experience for those kids to be able to see what that's all about. And then as the things, I met all day yesterday with Dr. Lang, the incoming director. Cannot express enough his excitement as he anticipates coming over to, to take over. He's gonna be phenomenal, and I anticipate some great, great things happening and moving the programs even further along in the areas of dual credit, apprenticeships, and things of that nature. So I want to express, you know, his excitement for his being able to work with you in the near future. So, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. I guess since we last spoke, I was able to assist after Robleski as we were putting materials together for the Sports Complex Phase 2 dedication and the Hubie Sarver Field dedication. So for those, I think many of you were there that day. It was, it was a pretty great event, and I think we were able to put some nice pieces together for that. And that's again, thanks for, to our kind of counterparts at MCS advertising who give us a lot of support on, on those pieces and are able to do them pretty quickly, too, which is a big help. We also, we live streaming the Honor Society Ceremony, which I know some of you got to see that. And then getting ready for all the big events that are gonna be coming over the next few weeks and month of senior awards and spring band and choir concerts and all those sorts of things that you'll be able to keep up with. And then probably the last big piece is just one more reminder that this Saturday night is the LP Foundation Trivia Night. So we hope you can come out and take part in that. And if not, whatever Dr. Robleski or Mr. Pacetto said, say, I've got the 50/50, take it for Saturday. Come and talk to me, because they're sitting at my desk waiting to go. By the way, that's all unless you have any questions for tonight.
Thank you. All right. Under New Business, 10.1, any motion for approval of proclamation recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6 through the 10th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion of approval to award Visoring Construction, the Howard Fellow Stadium renovation contract for $2,308,186?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.3, any motion of approval for the 2024, 2025 Sprout Educational Service Contract for Occupational and Physical Therapy Services.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.4, any motion of approval for the Annual Treasurers 30 Bond?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.5, any emotional, excuse me, motion of approval for the Treasurers Public Official Bond for the Bond Series 2023 ANB?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.6, any motion of approval of Get On Track Incorporated Contract for Speech, Language, Pathology Services Effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025?
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.7, any motion of approval to lead bids for the following projects, A, pizza, B, milk and dairy, C, bread, and D, Health Occupation Classroom Innovation?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.8, any motion of approval of the following retirement request, Mrs. Carrie Christman, physical education teacher at the conclusion of 2028, 2029 school year.
With regret, moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.9, any motion of approval for following resignations, Mrs. Andrea Eichelkraut, LP Honor Society Advisor, effective at the end of the 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.10, any motion of approval for the following appointments, Mr. Patrick Short, volunteer bass fishing coach, effective for the 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 10.11, any motion of approval for the Renaissance Program to attend the Jostens Annual Renaissance Global Conference in Orlando, Florida, from July 15 through the 18th, 2024. Attendees will include the advisor, selective student leaders, and staff chaperones. Expenses will be paid through a combination of fundraising, family contributions, and district budget allocations.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to move into executive closed session for the purpose of A, discussion of the minutes of the meetings lawfully closed under the Opens Meeting Act, whether for the purpose of approval of the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes? B, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee? C, collective negotiations matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives? Indeed, imminent pending litigation with open session, possible action items to follow.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.